Order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Trail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. First item is public comment. If anyone in the audience wishes to address the council, please come to the podium. You have three minutes, public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council? Hearing none, we do have a closed session. Andre?
Yes, Mayor Cabralis, we have closed session for both the Airport Authority and the City Council. The Airport Authority item, item two, is the same as item number three. It is real estate negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. The real property is the property immediately north and adjacent to Southern California Logistics Airport that the city owns, and the negotiating parties are Beowulf and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, as well as the city. The other item is a existing litigation, and the names of the parties are listed. It's the City of Victorville versus George Jew and Helen Jew et al., case number CIVVS 807044. And the last item is potential litigation pursuant to subdivision C of section 54956.9. At this point, appropriate to disclose the potential parties, as it may harm the city. To the extent there's any reportable action, we will come out and report that action at the conclusion of the closed session.
Thank you. We'll move into closed session.
Your service to the city and to this community, and let us Benedict. Almighty God, I thank you that I live in a city where people like me can come and ask a blessing upon these people, as they seek to do good for this community, as they seek to serve this community for the purposes to which it exists. Thank you for their wisdom, their dedicated service. I'm sure that they don't always agree on all issues, but I am grateful to live in a community where issues can be discussed, and the best decision that can be made is tried to be made. May you grant these servants great wisdom, great skill, great understanding, as they face the challenges that confront our community, and as they celebrate the successes, many of which go unnoticed, that they, and employees of the city, have cause to happen. Keep them safe, guide them, and empower them. Amen. Thank you, once again.
... through the flag of the United States of America. Color, always the same. A nation unified, indivisible, infinite.
We also have an urgency item to be added to the Water District meeting. Andre?
Yes, there's an item on the agenda to be added to the Water District pursuant to government code 54954.2. Upon a finding that the item arose after the posting of the agenda and its immediate need, received communications regarding the need to get communication services with respect to the wastewater treatment plant. That information was not made available until, I believe, late Friday with the holiday. The agenda had already been posted, and per the staff report, there's an immediate need to take action on that item.
Your motion. Your second?
Second.
And we'll add, this is item number eight under the Water District agenda. Next, we have a public comment, and I do have two cards for public comment on item one. You have three minutes, and I'll call first on Dorothy Miller.
Dorothy Miller, we have a little problem. At the last meeting, there was a couple council members, city manager, could not stand in for one of the issues on the agenda, and when they went to be called to come back out to finish the meeting off, no one seemed to be able to know where they were. They did not come back. They did not finish the meeting. You guys are representing the people, supposedly. Disappearing and not finishing the meeting, that's not good at all. It really looks bad. There was an article in the paper this morning, I was very pleased to read it, and I think, I hope you all read it, it's not good. And I'll be so happy when this thing comes to a head, and we know what is really going on with this up here, because that is not good, what we're seeing and what's coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm Miller?
Our council members, I just was also reading the paper, I think it was Sunday's edition, and it indicated that the city is about $189 million in the hole because of the power plant and things like that, at least for the general electric part of it. Now, I'm just thinking, how much of that money could have been used for the city rather than for the businesses or whatever? Everybody's saying that you're for the business in the City of Victorville. It seems like all the big businesses that you're for end up sticking it to us. I know there's a wire company about 10 years ago took off. While back, I heard that there's a million-square-foot warehouse on the base that's not being used. Well, that's all money we put out, but I don't see any money coming back on that. And along with that, there's a couple items on here, but I'm going to bring this up now anyway. You want to spend $35,000 or $35,000 on the parking lot at the Green Tree, you want to spend a bunch of money on the park and ride, we can't get eucalyptus extended. And if we had this money that didn't get wasted, we could do some of these things for the City of Victorville, and the people of Victorville. I guess we should look at it that way once in a while. Thank you.
To you. Next, we'll go into the Library Board of Trustees' agenda. There are no revisions. We do have a consent calendar. Approval?
Second.
My name is Carmen, and I came here in 1961, and the water bill is keeping going up and up and up and up. I can't afford it, I'm a waiter lady. Only I get in $100 a month, and the water is keeping going, and the water, I cannot drink it up. I can see you people, everybody got a bottle of water. I can't drink the stinky water. This is terrible. You understand my English? This bad. This is not real. I don't have the money to give you $15 more. I paid for me and my daughter over $100, and only I got a little bit of yard there. And I go wash my car with a cloth, because I don't want to put it in the water holes. What we want to do, why I could do. When the water is good, you can drink the water. I've been here many years. This water, you can drink it up, but your water is not good. This water is rotten, and it's poison, and it's bad. Let's check it up in the water, because you doing a lot of work, but it's not done the work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the Southern California Logistics Trail Authority, and we will also have the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and the chairman for those authorities are Congressman Caldwell.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. I'll do both of them together. There are no revisions to the agenda. To my knowledge, there's no add-on or urgency items, and so the business of those two authorities...
Would you approve? Well, you don't have any.
A vote from you.
Vote for what?
To...
There was no vote. There shouldn't be any vote, you can clear that.
I just voted to...
Was not aware there was an issue.
Yeah, I pulled my vote.
There weren't any items. It was just...
Approve what you said. Victorville Redevelopment Agency agenda. We don't have any revisions. We have the consent calendar. Move for approval.
Second.
Item number four is a request to approve the authorization to sell rehabilitated properties, purchase another neighborhood stabilization program, and authorizes the Director of Economic Development as the authorized signer on all resale-related transaction documents. Staff request?
Second.
Next item is the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority agenda. There are no revisions. Bring communications, item number three, is a request to adopt resolution number JPFA 10-001, entitled "Resolution of the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Approving and Adopting His Bylaws and Setting the Dates, Place, and Time of his Regular Meetings." Second. Next is the Victorville Water District. There was a revision, and we vetted item number eight to this agenda, which is the urgency item. First item is number three, and this is a public hearing. Called to hear arguments for or against the adoption of resolutions number VWD 10-005 and VWD 10-006. Resolution 10-005, a resolution of the Victorville Water District making its determination to fix levy and collect standby and availability charges for water improvement district number one for fiscal year 2009, 2010. Resolution number 10-006 is the same, only it's for improvement district number two. I will now open up the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and call for the vote. Approval?
Second.
Item number four, is a request to approve change orders to the cash grading contractors' contract for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant to increase the contract amount by $49,885.25. Have a motion? For approval? Item number five, request to approve change orders to the Aaron's Corporation contract for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant to increase the contract amount by $63,688. Motion?
Move for approval of that, and I guess we can go ahead and do item number 10 on City Council agenda at the same time?
Oh, we're on five.
Yeah, we're on five. Move for approval.
Second.
I'd like to make a comment, please. You know, this is getting a little ridiculous with all these change orders. I know, I hope it's not our doing in the change orders, and it's the companies'. Did they make a bid, and then they're increasing their bid? Oops, sorry, Sean, doing it again.
To answer your question, Councilwoman Almond, the nature of construction is that there are field conditions that often cause changes to the work that nobody could anticipate, and change orders result from that. When we get into something as complex as a wastewater treatment plant, where we have numerous contractors out there trying to work together, there may be upgrades, there may be, again, design changes resulting from field conditions. All of those result in change orders. And as I've indicated before to this council, every single one of these, I will look at very carefully, and quite often, we're negotiating with a contractor, which you don't see is the original demand for a change order from a contractor, which may be a much, much larger amount than what we bring before you.
But we're not making changes in the design?
Some we are. Some is an upgrade, some are design changes that occur as a result of, you know, field conditions that are not anticipated.
It seems that every council meeting, we have at least two or three on the agenda.
That's correct.
And each one increases the cost...
That's right.
Of this power plant, of the treatment plant. I know when I give a bid, we stick with it. I mean, we have to eat it if it's our mistake.
Understood, and there are many other incidents out there where a contractor will attempt to get more money from us, and we will deny it, but you don't hear about those ones.
Thank you.
If I may add to that, typically, the time period for a wastewater treatment plant from when you decide you want to build one till when it's operational is four to five years. This one is like in the two-year range, and we elected to go with this to meet the time restraints that were, we had to meet Dr. Pepper's Need and other folks. So we went with a design-build type design, which, when typically we do the design, bid, then build, those projects, you have more time to work on the design and refine it. So with a design-build, you will have a tendency to have more change orders, because it's done at a much more rapid pace. So most of our projects are design, bid, build. This is design-build, and we don't normally do it that way, but that's why there is what seems to be a large number of change orders.
But we're going to be going beyond what we've allowed as far as cost?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item six, request to award a contract to VCI Telcom in the amount of $1,125,412.40 for the construction of the east side electrical backbone which will serve the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is also a companion to City Council item number 11, and we'll take both of those together. Approval? Second. Item number seven, is a request to adopt resolution number VWD 10-007. It's a resolution of the Victorville Water District objecting to the sale of certain tax-dedied property within the City of Victorville. Motion?
移到
Again? We have item number eight, the urgency request. This is for expenditure of $38,100 for charter, and this is for a SCADA, SCADA monitoring system, I guess it is. Have a motion to approve? Second.
Can I get a voice vote on this item, because it isn't listed as part of the agenda?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have the City Council agenda. We have a public hearing on...
Mayor Cabralis, if I might, I need to abstain on agenda item number three, as my insurance firm uses the same attorney that Lamar Advertising does.
Public hearing, item number three. Item number three is a public hearing called to hear argument for or against adopting resolution number 10-023, reported by Lamar. And I will now open up the public hearing, and I do have a card from Emma Enrigas.
Good evening. My name is Emma Enrigas, and I'm with Reggasham Savage, Nolan and Tilden. We represent the interests... Sure. I'm Emma Enrigas, and I'm an attorney with the law firm Reggasham Savage, Nolan and Tilden. We represent the interests of TLC Properties, Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, and Lamar Outdoor Advertising Company, collectively known as the Lamar Companies. And Lamar objects to the adoption of resolution number 10023, and we have provided a letter to you for your consideration. I'll just highlight some of the points of that letter for you. First of all, initially, the Lamar Companies object to the adoption of this resolution on the ground that the city violated the Lamar Companies' due process rights when the city acquired the subject properties from Benjamin G. Porter under the threat of eminent domain, and that the city knew of the Lamar Companies' interest in the subject property, but failed to give the Lamar Companies notice of an opportunity to participate in those proceedings. Second, the Lamar Companies object to the proposed adoption of the resolution on the grounds that the public interest, convenience, and necessity do not require the acquisition of the Lamar Companies' interest in the above-described subject properties under CCP or Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1240.030(c), and the project was not planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, under Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1240.030(b). Third, the Lamar Companies also object to the adoption of the resolution of necessity on the ground that the city does not appear to have fully complied with the applicable requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and the National Environmental Protection Act in connection with the project. This objection is being made at this time to preserve the Lamar Companies' rights to assert this objection in connection with their response to the anticipated complaint in eminent domain, but should compliance be later determined, the Lamar Companies will withdraw this objection. Lamar is making this objection at this point in time based on the facts, as known, but Lamar is in the process of obtaining more facts. Fourth, the Lamar Companies object to the city's refu- Fourth, the Lamar Companies object to the city's refusal to honor the provisions of paragraph eight of the sign-location lease dated January 27, 2006, by and between Benjamin G. Porter and Lamar Companies. Benjamin G. Porter was, um, a property owner, and he owned the underlying interest on which the billboard is now currently located. And the lease that Mr. Porter entered into with the Lamar Companies, um, in paragraph eight specifically provides that, "In the event of condemnation of the subject premises or any part thereof by proper authorities, or relocation of the highway, the lesser grants to the lessy," and the lessy would be Lamar, "for the right to relocate its signs on lessor's remaining property adjoining the condemned property, or on the relocated highway subject to lessor's approval of the location." And Lamar was not, um, provided with any notification that this acquisition was taking place. Lamar has not been able to exercise its right under the lease to relocate its billboard. We would further submit that the city's proposed resolution necessity and staff report clearly acknowledged that a remnant area of approximately 6.95 acres is not required for the proposed project, and the Lamar Companies have the right to relocate the outdoor advertising display on issue but for the refusal of the city. The Lamar Companies further submit that city ordinance 18.62.070 F1 is unconstitutional as being asserted by the city as a basis for denying the Lamar Companies the right to relocate its sign on its remnant properties. Would ask that you would all consider this and these injections, um, in deciding today or when, when you decide, um, upon the, whether or not to adopt the resolution number 10 dash zero two three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, or, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against item number three? Being none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, any questions or comments from the council? And we'll ask for the vote.
Mayor Cabralis, if I may, just brief staff report, uh, we are aware of the concerns raised by Lamar. Um, there have been attempts previously at mediation, and we've tried to come to agreement. Uh, most of these issues raised in the letter, uh, have at least been explored. Uh, we believe that the resolution of necessity is in compliance with the requirements of the law. We believe that the pertinent findings as required with respect to public convenience and necessity are contained specifically in the body of the resolution and the staff report, and that we have complied with due process, and we would urge that, uh, you consider the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. I'll call for the vote. Approval? Second.
Item number four, public hearing called to hear arguments for or against adopting the mitigated negative declaration for the construction and operation of natural gas pipeline at the Southern California Logistics Airport. We'll now open up the public hearing on item number four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come to the podium. Wishing to speak for or against item number four? Being none, I will close the public hearing on item number four, and call for the vote.
Almond for approval.
Second.
Mayor Cabralis, before we vote on this, though, if I might ask staff that in the future, if we're adopting a negative declaration with mitigation measures, that it be provided to the councils so that we actually know what we're adopting. I know that we can come and get it, but it's not a part of the agenda, and, um, I just think it would be good at least for us to have the opportunity to review it before we do adopt it.
Okay.
Item number five is the consent calendar.
Second.
Number Almond?
Item number six, request to adopt resolution number 10 dash zero three six, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, objecting to the sale of certain tax-dedied property within the city of Victorville.
Move for approval.
Mayor Cabralis, before you go to item seven, I have a question, procedural question for the city attorney.
What?
Does this item fall under the previous opinion you rendered with regards to the golf?
I believe it would. It potentially have enhanced clubhouse and the golf course, and therefore I think probably advisable that Akron has previously pulled a straw that can vote on these items, and that what he can remain in the balance of caution.
And don't leave, please.
Hey, item number seven, request to authorize.
Can we wait until they leave the room, please?
Request to authorize staff to proceed with construction of the Green Tree Clubhouse parking lot by public works staff in the amount of $35,000.
Move for approval.
Second. Item number eight, it's a request to enter a lien agreement with High Point Communities as security for improvements required, uh, by section 17.64060 D2 of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Second.
Item number nine is the request to enter a lien agreement with High Point Communities as security for the improvements, uh, required by certain sections of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Mayor Cabralis, I apologize, but once again, I'm going to have to abstain on item 10, as my firm now does business with Cooley Construction, so I will not be able to participate in any votes on contracts with them.
Item 10. Item 10 is a request to award a contract to Cooley Construction in the amount of $534,171.20 plus contingency and construction engineering for the construction of the Armigosa Park and Ride facility.
Move approval?
Second.
Ryan Beck?
Please. Okay. Item number 11, we've already, uh, voted on as companion item to Water District number six. Uh, we'll go to item 12. Item number 12, it's a request to approve the, uh, $12,975,900, no, $12,975,975 for the San Diego County Fire Protection District for the contract, uh, 0867A1.
Whoa. Second.
Did it go up any at all, chief? It went down. Thank you.
No reduction in services, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good deal. Uh, 13, request to approve council policy number CP dash 10 zero four entitled General Fund Reserve Policy.
Move for approval.
Question here on this one?
Second.
Okay, uh, the policy indicates a 15% reserve. I think that's excessive. Um, the norm for whether it's business or other municipalities is generally 10%. If you can get there, that's a good thing. We've got a pretty substantial general fund, and it grows each year. That 5% is a significant amount of money that ought to be budgeted. Uh, there's nothing righteous about putting 15% away in the, in the reserve fund and unobligating it, uh, when there's a lot of activities that we participate in. I can certainly see opportunity, I can see the participation with the chambers, a lot of the, um, other, uh, activities, uh, that are put on throughout the year that we, uh, sponsor or buy tables for. Uh, that, uh, 5%, which is probably on today's dollar about 3 million and would grow, uh, I would hope that we would not encumber the, um, the general fund, uh, 15% in reserve. I think 10% is adequate. Some of the things that the state goes after, uh, they would be out of the scope of that range in any way. The redevelopment agency comes to mind, uh, the 13 million that they're going after this year from our RDA, uh, those aren't numbers that we could or should be, uh, expecting to backstop. Certainly, our, our debt service is an important, uh, commitment that we must maintain, but, uh, the difference between the 10 and the 5 to me is a significant participation in the community that I'd like to see maintained, so my recommendation at least would be a 10% reserve, not a 15. That, that, I'm, I'm not going to say that until somebody else says something, but I mean, that would be my recommendation. 15 is on the agenda.
Go.
Mayor and council, uh, one of the things that we have dealt with, dealt with in the last, uh, half, is, uh, financial problems that's caused us to lay off a lot of people and turn in equipment and sell equipment, and, uh, have spent the general fund, and at one point in time we were in arrears, we were in the, in hold general fund. We did, the, the 15% is, is arbitrary. I originally wanted 25%, primarily based upon the fact that I have no income, literally no income, July 1 and, and January 1. Yet we have huge expenditures from the general fund, not only for the general operations, which is administration overhead legal, but fire and police, uh, huge expenditures for those, and we have to borrow. And we have, we borrowed last year, and we've had to, we're going to borrow this year, and we're going to have to borrow next year, probability. Count on, uh, in stable economic times, for property tax and sales tax to come in and replenish those, but where you have sales tax that has dropped dramatically, not coming back, although we think we've hit the bottom. We thought we had hit the bottom on assessed value, i.e. property taxes, and that's continuing to decline, and we have no general fund reserves to reach to. Desperately need it now. And so, uh, we need to establish not only the, in my general fund reserve, we probably need to establish the reserves in almost every account we have.
Well, I'm, uh, I'm prepared to support staff's recommendation for the 50%. Have gone through some hard times and, and general fund was depleted completely, so build that up. Any other?
Well, I'm, I'm going to support it. I don't completely agree with it. I, I would like to have a 15% or a 25%, but working out of a very difficult situation and, um, still looking at the prospects of further layoffs and, and cutbacks, and concerned that in our desire to put the cushions back in place, A, end up having to cut further and lay off more than we might otherwise have to do. So, nervous about going to a number that big, but I don't have basis with which to challenge recommendation of staff, so I'm going to vote for it, but I am concerned that it will harm some people that might otherwise, uh, not be harmed.
Any comments?
Well, I, I, I would concur with those comments. I mean, obviously, we don't want to, uh, to see any more, uh, layoffs or anything like that than, than we should have to. I think this is just, uh, a- as we go forward, um, good fiscal management and, and practice. Apparently, this hasn't been in place before, and I think that, uh, our city manager is just trying to make sure that, uh, as we go forward, that we don't get ourselves back into this position. Um, you know, I, I defer to, to his expertise, um, and staff's expertise as to what the percentage should be, and I, I would venture to say that that's not something that can't be reviewed again at a future date if it doesn't make sense. Either it's too much, or it could possibly be too little. Mr. Cox is at, originally was looking at 25%, but I think if you start implementing these reserves in all the different accounts and funds that we have, um, it'll just definitely prevent us from having to get back into the, this type of situation again, so, um, you know, I think the, the percentage he indicated is somewhat arbitrary. I think it can be reviewed on, on a, a regular basis, and, uh, if it's too much or it's too little, then it can be changed, but at least this sets a policy in place that puts us, um, in, or gives us the ability to, uh, to set that for the future and, uh, we haven't had it before, so.
I, I understand and concur with the comments. China, if you read this very carefully, um, are in a period of financial hardship. As a result, the reserve this year is only 5%. The goal is 15%. This year is 5%, very minimal amount, so by next year, if it didn't work you up or down or change it. Goal at this time is 15%, but in all likelihood, until the economy changes, you're not going to be able to even reach for the goal of loan funding, so. Probably, because we are in the financial hardship, we expect it to be in the financial hardship situation this budget year.
Vote?
Item 14 is presentations from council members. I'll start with, uh, Mr. McCaffrey.
Uh, no, I have nothing tonight.
Yeah, uh, there's a, an important LAFCO hearing coming up on our sphere of influence expansion. It's in June. Uh, what's the date? Is, you remember the date, don't you? Off the top of your head?
I believe it'd be June 16th typically. It's the third Wednesday.
It's June 16th, and I believe it's in these council chambers as a matter of fact. It's an extremely important meeting that LAFCO has happened. A lot of times you, kind of, that's one of those boards that you don't pay much attention to, but we're looking at our expansion of our sphere of influence, uh, to the north, uh, beyond the airport and up to 15. The compromise that was agreed to between the city of Victorville, Atlanta, and Silver Lakes, uh, special districts, um, up there that represents, it's not an incorporated city, it's an unincorporated, but it's, it does have 100 square. but it does have 100 square miles of sphere of influence in their boundaries now, goes over the 395, but does not touch the 15 at the moment. This is an extremely important issue facing not only the City of Victorville, but the entire Victor Valley. If LAFCO cedes the control of the land use decisions along the 15 to Silverlakes, it will clearly threaten any future growth beyond our current application, not only the city, but the entire half a million people and growing to a million over the next 15 years or so. I'm going to personally go. This council has taken a position, I guess, to support it. I voted against it, and I continue to oppose it. I'm going to go to the hearings and argue against Silverlakes even having a Sphere of Influence application before LAFCO at this time. Clearly, that's a 6,000 to 10,000 community, unincorporated community, with no resources or ability to deliver any services along the 15. There are some serious property owners that are following behind the Desert Express that want to develop that area. The next five to 10 years are going to be extremely critical for the growth along the 15. To take that and put it in the hands of a rural community that has no infrastructure or sense of history about how to do business along that corridor is very dangerous. If the agreement that we have reached is modified in any way, I withdraw even my support from that agreement, although I did that one reluctantly. The TXI issue is in the middle of that and everything else. These issues, when you see the maps pop up there and see the decision-making that it'll go into the hands of one board or another, is dangerous, and I hope that we don't follow down that path. It's totally in LAFCO's hands, and there are seven members on that board, two city council members, two county members, two special districts, and a at-large seat. That's seven people that will be voting on, basically, the future growth of the City of Victorville and the Victor Valley. So, as we tee this thing up and we move down the line, I hope that you pay attention to it and show up here, and if you have some concerns, express those concerns. If there's support there, fine, go for it. I don't see how, in my mind, I can support it at all. We've been caught in this quagmire a couple of times in the past, where we've acquiesced to one entity or another just to be a good neighbor, and then to find out in the end that we get screwed over and have a lot of serious difficulties that we have to deal with later on down the line. So, the future is here now, the train is coming, the development beyond that train is coming, and the best thing that could happen is approve Victorville's application to LAFCO and deny Silverlakes their application to even be considered at this time. And then, as TRED moves down the line five, six years from now, go ahead and take a look at it, leave it in the county, and take a look at it, and say, who can deliver the services that are needed at that time, and make that kind of a land use decision, because there is no land use decision based on Silverlakes expanding their sphere of influence, none whatsoever, not one single rational land use decision behind that. Mr. Metzenfeld is the chairman of LAFCO now, so a lot of influence will be carried by his opinions on this matter. And be all honest, I don't even know what his opinions are on this matter. So, anyway, that's my comments today, and I'll keep saying that right up to the LAFCO hearing.
Well, I agree that it is monumental issue before LAFCO. Think whatever the decisions will be have a huge impact on future of the Victor Valley. I'm troubled by the fact I'm not sure where we are today. We were asked, and we agreed, to participate in discussions with our sister city to the west, Adelanto, and with the Silverlakes Community Service District. We did, and it had been suggested that if the three entities could come to some agreement, that that would perhaps carry the day, and we did, much to everybody's surprise. Adelanto, Hellendale, and Victorville did reach an agreement. Map was drawn, and subsequent to that, objections were made, and my recollection of events is that new maps began to surface, and we had discussions in these chambers about what was labeled the donut hole, and the question of whether donut holes would be looked at favorably by LAFCO or not, and we also had the input from TXI and from other mining interests. I thought, and I've expressed this to Mr. Cox earlier this evening, I thought that when we last discussed it officially as council, that there was some uncertainty as to what the current map boundaries were. Certainly, the agreement reached with Adelanto and Hellendale was not acceptable, apparently, to LAFCO or to TXI. There was another map or two that was being floated, which I had not seen, other than we did have something up on the screen. My recollection is, is that I asked specifically to see what the map was that was supposed to be ultimately LAFCO proposal. I don't know how else to phrase it. I don't, I have seen maps, but I don't think I've seen that map. Now, Mr. Cox and I tried to look at the LAFCO staff report dated May 24th, which I just saw for the first time when I got here this evening. It is, it's unreadable to me. I mean, it's a small scale with hash marks on it, and I can't make heads or tails out of it. Here we are, June 1st, and according to staff, this issue is going to be debated on June 16th, which means we have a meeting the night before, and I feel uncomfortable that I still, at this moment, do not know what the LAFCO proposal is and/or any other proposals that may be out there. And I think at the importance of development of the I-15 corridor, the approachment southerly into flight patterns of Southern California Logistics Airport, and the impact on the development of logistic facilities, and we're two weeks away, and I don't have in my possession a map that I can read. Confidence that Mr. Cox and the staff will sort it out, but I feel very nervous coming in here two weeks from now and seeing, apparently, for the first time, whatever the presentation will be the following day at LAFCO. Very nervous about that.
We have enough, so we'll call for a German. Turn.